Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the briefing session and budget work session for the Kernersville Board of Alderman. The date is May 26. We'll begin with an invocation delivered by Alderman Bruce Boyer. Alderman Boyer?
If we could bow our heads, please. Dear Lord, we have much to be grateful for. A relatively strong financial position as we move towards the end of the worst of the pandemic. A strong town staff that has shown fiscal restraint and good judgment. And also has put the needs of the citizens first in their judgments. And a caring board that is willing to do what is right. And also a wonderful community that we have to be a part of. We pray that you will, that we will operate our town with, in a way that reflects your will and is pleasing to you, Lord. And guide us as we make plans for the upcoming fiscal year. In this we pray, amen.
Thank you, Alderman Boyer. All right, we'll begin with the work session. The work session to review the 2021-2022 draft budget. The draft budget is available online at the Town of Kernersville website. Town manager, Mr. Curtis Swisher, if you could begin.
Madam Mayor and Board, I've met with each of you already regarding the budget, mainly the capital purchases that are being recommended in the budget. So I won't cover those individually tonight. What I will do is, is I'll go through and highlight some of the revenues that have changed, whether they went up or went down. And then I'll, I'll cover the general expenses that relate to every department. Things like salaries and wages, insurance, those items. And then I'll go through, if a department has some changes in a line item that's significant, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to cover every change in a line item that's $100 or $200 or something like that. I mean, because that increase is usually due to just standard operating increases. Same that you experience every day in, in general life, you know, it just costs you more to operate. So I won't cover the small changes.
If you could pull your microphone a little closer to you.
All right, I won't cover the small changes. I'll just cover the, the significant changes. Not every department had significant changes in their line items. If they don't, then, then I won't cover that. I'll just say there's really nothing to cover in that department. So I'll start, I'll start with the revenues this year. And, you know, we're fortunate, last year we had pretty tight budget because of COVID-19. And as I said in my budget message, you know, last year was obviously was really tight. And when we did last year's budget, we were even worried about this year's budget. And going into the budget, you know, in December, November, December, January, we really didn't know what it would look like, but we were optimistic that we were seeing the numbers coming in for 2021 that looked pretty good. So we were hoping that that would continue and we would see some increased growth. So I will tell you upfront that our revenues are really good. What we projected for this coming fiscal year 2122. We did not see much of a, of an impact from COVID-19 on overall basis as far as revenues go. There were some line items that were impacted, but as an overall, we did not see much of a, much of an impact. You know, we're fortunate in that aspect. So for 2122, our tax base is increasing to 3.66 billion. That's a new high for our tax base. And that generates about $20 million in property tax. That's about an increase of 12% from fiscal year 2021. Our sales and use tax is, is really an 18% increase over what we projected for 2021, but that increase or that projection was low based on COVID-19. So when you look at what we actually collected or what we anticipate collecting for 2021 and benchmark 2122 against that, it's really a 6% or 7% increase. But we're looking at about $6.6 million in sales and use tax. Another revenue source that we've seen increase in 2021, and we expect it to continue in 2122, is building inspections. We're anticipating about $570,000 in building inspections. That is related directly to the amount of growth that's in Kernersville. Amount of building that you see going on. All of those folks come in and get building permits of, of some sort. That number goes up. You'll see a budget amendment. One of the items in the budget amendment tonight is an increase in revenue in that department for 2021. So we anticipate that to continue strong for 2122. Recreation revenues, we're anticipating them going up a little bit as well. We do have a couple of revenues that we anticipate a drop in. We see those declining. One of those is the, or actually both of them are directly related to something that's occurred. Rent on our communication tower, that number will be coming down. Mainly because, as you all remember, we sold one of our leases out on one of those communication towers. We sold that lease out so we can no longer collect the rent from it. And also our commercial solid waste revenue is, is dropping. As you all remember, I think it was last year, the board made the decision to get out of the commercial solid waste business. When you do that, you're, you're not collecting the revenue that you would normally be collecting. That revenue will phase itself out probably over the next couple of fiscal years. But along with that, well, the expense will phase out as well. So they should offset. In the end, our total revenues were $39,371,717. That's up from $33.6 million last year. It's not a $6 million increase as it says, I guess it is, but it's really in a sense it's not. There are a lot of capital purchases recommended in this budget and several of them are large capital purchases. I'll cover those as we go along. So that revenue is, is offset by the revenue line item for loans for installment purchases. And then we have the, the expense related to that is a payment. So revenues are up. Overall, it is a good year. You know, it was honestly better than what we anticipated it being when we did last year's budget. We did not think that this year's budget would be nearly as good as it turned out to be. And, and really we still, you know, we still budgeted pretty conservatively, not knowing what will happen with COVID. At this budget, at this, this revenue number, we are recommending lowering the tax rate. It is currently 57 cents. We are recommending lowering that rate to 55.9 cents. So it's a little over a one cent tax rate reduction. I've talked to some folks around Lutrad. A couple of them are going up on the tax rate or recommending a tax rate increase. Winston Salem, looks like they're recommending about a one to one and a half cent tax reduction, tax rate reduction. The county is somewhere a little bit stronger than that, but in that general ballpark. So we are recommending the tax rate reduction on that. And I will tell you before I get too far into the expense side of it, there is no stimulus money at all in this budget. We're not doing any revenue replacement, any of that. We're not covering any of the expenses with the stimulus money. I'll cover that either tonight in the regular briefing or, or after this budget workshop if I have time. But we did not base anything in the budget on using any of the stimulus funds. Several reasons for that, but we just did not do it. I'll move on to the expense side. Some of our general expenses, again, these are expenses that basically every department incurs. Besides salaries and wages, the biggest one of those is, is in insurance, our health insurance. As you all know, in, in 2019, we made the recommendation and the board approved it, joining the NCHIP program for our health insurance. We're recommending, of course, staying with that program. And we'll tell you that since July of 2019, we had a savings, we've had a savings of about $664,000 in insurance cost. So, so far that has, has been a good decision. It's paid off. We're recommending staying with them again. This year we will see about a two and a half percent increase in our insurance cost for our employees. You base that on, on years and previous years where we've had eight to 10%. So two and a half percent is, is a, you know, a welcome sign in, in some of the increases we've seen. We're also recommending a 2% cost of living adjustment this year. We did not give a cost of living or merit adjustment, either one last year. Year before, we gave a 2% merit. The 2% cost of living will help move our pay scale as well, which will keep us more competitive in the marketplace. We're recommending a 2% 401K. That's staying the same. That's currently what we provide for employees and we're recommending leaving it the same. The pay study, developmental pay, that remains in the budget. We're recommending leaving that in the budget. I think it's been in there since 98 or 2000. This year, the department that was studied was the fire department. Most of those folks in the department received an adjustment of about two pay grades. And, and I can tell you, it's difficult hiring right now in all departments. Public safety departments right now, police and fire are probably the two most difficult. We are seeing it trickle down to public services and parks and rec. But with the developmental pay and the pay studies, what that does, moving those pay grades, is it allows us to stay at market rate for those jobs. So we'll be right around 100%, which is where you have to be to hire in. The two big ones that we are recommending, I think last year we recommended and the board approved, increasing the minimum starting pay for all full-time employees. We recommended increasing that to $14 an hour last year. We are recommending taking that up to $15 an hour this year. It's not as, in terms of dollars, it's not a lot of money because again, all of our folks are, they're already at 14. We will, I think it's 12 employees maybe that will be impacted by that. I guess right around that number. I did talk to Winston Salem. They are also recommending the same this year for their employees. It's a little bit more of a jump for them because I think they're probably at 12 or 13 right now. So they're jumping up to 15 as well. The big one that we're recommending and that we're really excited about is onsite wellness and healthcare. That's what that is, is it's an onsite nurse three days a week that will do things such as workers' comp incidents, drug screenings, do pre-employment physicals, vaccinations. Also if someone's just not feeling good and needs to go see the nurse, they can do that without having to go to the doctor, wait in line at the doctor or whatever. You know, we think that in the long run will, will really help us to cut down on some of the time folks are out. And also encourage folks maybe to go to a nurse that they otherwise wouldn't go to the doctor. We see that being a benefit all the way around for the employee, for the town as far as insurance goes. So we're, we're recommending that. We've been looking at that since about 2016. We've just not been able to make it work in the budget. And this year we, we are, and we are, we're recommending that we put it in the budget. The first year, of course, was a startup cost. You know, it, it won't be one of the break even propositions, so to speak. But in the second year and beyond, it, you know, it should provide an equal benefit to its cost. So that's what we're looking at doing there. And the last thing that's a general expense for every department really is insurance and bonds. They increased across the board. That's our insurance on all of our vehicles, all of that stuff. It just went up. There's no way around it. We've got to have it. We've been fortunate in years past that the increase has not been significant. But this year it did go up a little bit more than usual, but fortunately it's, it's not so bad that we can't absorb it. So that's the, the general expenses that every department incurs. I'll move on to the park, to the departments, each individual department. This year, all of you have in your budget, the justifications. And it's what the justifications are, is it tells you what's included in every line item. So for instance, in, you know, administration, you've got every line item, what makes that line item up. So departmental supplies and materials, you've got, you know, pens, pencils, all of that. It tells you what's in there. And we will caution you that, that those justifications are done probably in January, February, probably February at the latest. It's probably January. You know, I meet with the department head starting in March, wrap it up about the end of March. So the number that's in that justification, you may not see it anywhere in the budget in line item. I mean, that's just the way it works. If all goes well, that's the number that makes up the departmental request column. Now, that's what happens is sometimes that number may change before they submit their budget to finance. And so the justification will say one thing, you've got another number in the departmental request line item. And then manager recommend is sometimes totally different. Following that up, if I, if I make a recommendation to, to cut a line item, I don't usually go into the justifications and say, okay, you got to cut it $5,000 and this is what you need to take out. I just give them a number. The line item's $30,000 and I'll say, you got 20. Pretty much it's up to the department to spend that $20,000. So if I've cut a line item in there and you can see in the departmental request is one number and my manager recommends another, I'm not going to tell you specifically what's cut out of it. There are a couple of them that I can say, yes, this is what we eliminated. But for the most part, I can't. All I can tell you is that's how much money they have to spend. They need to prioritize that and spend it in the best way possible that they need in their department. Also, sometimes, so you'll know, I mean, there might be something in those justifications, and this happens more times than not, that, you know, again, we're doing this in January. You get to December, they may no longer need what's in that justification. They may buy something else or something else may break and they have to replace it. So just because it's in the justifications, that doesn't mean that it gets bought that year. If everything goes perfect, it does, but you know, that, that very rarely happens. The justifications that are in there, you know, things like contracts for software and all of that, that's pretty standard. Those, those pretty much stay the same. But when you get into equipment and maintenance and all of that, they change up all the time. So this is the first year I've put the justifications in the budget. I just wanted to explain that in case you were looking through it and saw a bunch of numbers that didn't match anything. That's just kind of, kind of the way it goes sometimes. So the first department that I'll cover is, is governing body. And that brings us to two that, you know, the justifications don't match what's in the, in the department request or manager recommend under election expense and advertising. They don't know it's actually election expense and departmental supplies and materials. Both of those are a little bit more than what was in the justifications. Election expense mainly because, you know, that's a, that's just a projected expense anyway that we get from the Elections Office Board of Elections. The last couple of times, it's been a little bit more than what they told us. So Keith and I discussed it. I increased it just a little bit in case it does come in a little bit more. We think that, that we've got enough to cover it now. I think we increased that line item $2,000 or $3,000. And the departmental supplies and materials, we increased it from the justifications because the other day we, we bought two new fireproof file cabinets and we think we'll need a third one for that. And it's what that is, is we keep the minutes and everything in there. So we increased that line item as well. The biggest thing in the governing body is, as you know, the town funds several nonprofits. You can see the list of those. I think it's all on the front page to the tune of about $146,000 a year. We also fund some out of the occupancy tax money, but this is just the ones coming out of the general fund. So there are one, two, three, four that actually got more than what they requested. And as you know, I talked to all of you, there were two that came in and requested a little more funding than what they received in 2021. The senior services came in. They requested an increase from 12,500 to 15,000. And I think it was Sister City requested from 2,100 to 3,000. So it's what that represented. I didn't really consider Sister City because they don't, you know, they don't request a lot anyway. So senior services was about a 20% increase. I talked to some of you and you all felt it was, if we gave one, we need to kind of give all of the other ones. So, so what I did was I did a 20% increase for the Kernersville Museum. They actually were getting a decrease to begin with. So we did the Kernersville Museum, Kernersville Little Theater, the Shepherd's Center, and Next Step Ministries. So they each got 20% more. Then they requested, I think that adds up to about $12,000 total. There were some that did not get an increase for various reasons. Community appearance, Arts Council, Kerners, not Kerners, Arts Council, the Chamber, and Kernersville Cares for Kids and the Housing Grant. You know, the Housing Grant and Arts Council Grant, they request that each year. They get the majority of their funding from either outside sources or from the county. Kernersville Cares for Kids, they didn't do any programming last year, so giving them an increase this year. They still have the money for 2021 left. And the Kerners, not the Kerners, follow the, the Chamber, spent a lot of work done on their building. They've got a five-year lease with the town, so their, their rent amount stays the same. So it was felt, you know, hey, we've done a substantial amount of work on it. And they're still hooked to the same lease or same rental amount for the next couple of years. So we felt like it was fair with what they got in the work. So there is a 20% increase for those. You did hear this year from the Historic Preservation Society, they requested $4,900. They do right much around town with, with a lot of the historic properties and so forth. We've never funded them before. The board was fine with funding them, so their request is in the budget. And then the Salvation Army and Crisis Control Ministry, they're in the budget for $10,000 each. I think this is intended to be one-time funding related to the COVID pandemic. If the board desires to fund them on an ongoing basis, you just need to put it in the budget every year. But the thought behind that was, is both of those agencies, they've really done a lot. I mean, they're, they've done a lot to help their recipients of their services. You know, the folks who get those services and need those services. And it's really, it's put a heavy burden on Crisis Control and Salvation Army. I mean, they, they used all of their resources this year and maxed about all of them out. So the board thought it would be a good idea to help them with some funding. So they are each in there this year for $10,000. The next one in line is administration. There's really nothing in the administration department. That is basically the department where Beth, Keith and myself are. I don't think there's really any changes in there. Salaries and wages went up a little, which trickles down everything, retirement expense, 401K, all of that. But all of the operating and maintenance line items pretty much remain the same. Travel, training remain the same. So we're not looking at any significant increases in that department. The next one is community development, permitting enforcement. I will tell you upfront that you may look at salaries and wages and say, what happened in that? Who do we hire? What do we do? We didn't hire anybody. We had a position that's over in Stormwater that we transferred back into permitting enforcement. That's our zoning enforcement officer. We transferred two positions from Stormwater back into the regular operating budget and moved two other positions over into Stormwater. So it, I mean, it all offset itself. All we did was realign the positions. We put positions in Stormwater that we felt were better aligned with Stormwater and took positions out of Stormwater that, that aren't exactly lined up with it like they should be. So in the end, that's a wash. So there's no change there. The, there's two of the biggest changes in, in permitting enforcement you'll see in the part-time salaries and wages, part-time. Last year it was $7,200. This year we're recommending $30,400. And I will tell you that, that is due strictly to the amount of growth and building inspections that we're seeing. We can't keep up with inspections and the requests for inspections and permits without a part-time person. We actually, Jeff, requested a full-time person, but we're recommending a part-time person. And we'll tell you that it's very possible that we come back mid-year and say, hey, look, we've ran through this $30,000. We need some more money to keep this part-time person on. If that happens, it'll be offset by revenue because that means that we're generating more permits than what we anticipate. So, you know, that's, that's one good thing. I think the builders and developers like in Kernersville is that we'll get out and we'll inspect your project just as fast as we can. That's what keeps the building going. That's what keeps the revenue coming in. The other one of those is in other increases in departmental supplies and materials. And the other one that goes along with it is software license renewal. Those are tied together. Our inspectors and zoning enforcement officers, they use software all the time, as you can imagine, technology. So we've had to do some licensing upgrades, get some new laptops. And we've also got some new software that our inspectors will be using as well. So that's, that's the reason for those two increases. Nothing else in that department really is, is a big change. Training, travel, all of that pretty much remains the same. You'll see in some of the departments where training went up a little bit. And usually if training goes up, travel goes up with it because for some of that training, they have to travel. This department, it did not see that, but I think you'll see it in maybe police, fire and portion rec. A lot of that was because we put off so much training last year with COVID. It's time to catch up. So that's what that's related to in those departments. Next one is community development planning. Community development's got three departments, permitting, inspections, planning and engineering. So planning is the next one. Just trying to think, there's really no changes in there. We did move the planner from Stormwater back over to that department. That's why you see the, the increase in the salaries and wages line item. And the other increase is in professional services. That will be used, the onward Kernersville, which is kind of the extension of the Kernersville 2020. Jeff is recommending some professional services on that from marketing data that we'll use. Do some research there that we'll use for new businesses and putting out some new numbers to businesses. We've done that. Jeff's department has done that. All the new companies coming in, if they come in and want that or related to really about anything that, that you can think of, we can provide them with that data. So that, that money will go toward doing that research and having that data, data available for those folks. Nothing else in that department really changed. I think it pretty much all stayed the same throughout on that one. The last one in, in community development is engineering. You'll see the big change in there is in salaries and wages. We moved the engineer over to Stormwater, so we've got no salaries and wages. But as I said earlier, that just offsets the two that we brought over. The other thing you'll notice in there is there are some projects that may have been in last year that we don't have in this year under, you know, down under the capital outlay. Those projects have not been done yet. We just didn't put them in the budget. Really, when you have to carry those projects over, if it's large capital projects and you have to carry it over two or three years, it becomes a nightmare. So it's like, look, when you get to them, we'll come in, we'll have the revenue, we'll have the expense and we'll do a budget amendment. I'll set them at the same time. You'll see in tonight's budget amendment, they were decreasing the expenditures in the engineering department by about $500,000. That's for projects that were budgeted that haven't been done. So to keep from having to do that, it's easier just to not put them in the budget and do them when we get around to doing them. The two big ones that are, that are still out there, some National Pipe and Plastics, which is the company out on East Mountain Street, right past Trad Park. They're doing a sewer line extension in a road, doing an expansion of the building. Got that one and the sewer on Brookford, Brookford Road. We anticipate both of those being done in 2122, but you just never know. Because National Pipe and Plastic depends a lot on the individual that owns National Pipe and Plastic. So we didn't want to put it in and not have it done. Nothing on, nothing else in engineering, finance department. Really no increases that aren't associated with basically what we have to pay for the service. That being, you'll see the two biggest ones. You know, our contracted services went from 214 to 224 and our banking services went up as well. And both of those are related to what we collect in revenue. The contracted services, that's the amount we pay the county to collect our taxes. So as the amount of taxes goes up that we collect, that percentage that we pay them goes up as well. And the banking services, it, it increased mainly because the amount of credit card use goes up. So as that increases, the percentage that we pay increased. Their traveling trainings up slightly. I mean, it's less than $600, but it's up just a little bit. Their traveling trainings up slightly. I mean, it's less than six hundred dollars, but it's up just a little bit and that's for training that was delayed. Nothing else, uh, in the finance department. Um, move on to IT. IT looks a little odd, um, just because Adam's in the department and he's always gonna look a little odd. No, I'm just kidding. Um, the biggest one that, that'll jump out at you in IT is the professional, or actually it's telephone and postage. That is not all stamps and it's not all telephones. That, um, that is actually all of our cable and all of that. So what happened is Time Warner in the past has not charged us for cable at all of our, you know, all of our. Um, devices. They're now charging us for that. So we, if we want to have it, we don't have any option but to pay it. So we are now getting to pay them for all of that. Um, the software license and renewal went up. That stuff just goes up every year. And also we now have more licenses, um, to use it. Usually not everybody in the town had a, had an email account and, and had a license, but they've changed up. The group that we deal with that provides those licenses has changed how they do that. So we had to give one for everyone. Um, which increased that line item. I, you know, there's nothing we can do about it. Uh, we just have to have a license, um, if we want to be in compliance. So that went up. There are two new capital purchases in this that we attributed to the IT department. The first of those is the networking switches. Um, that's switches that we have here to use hardware that we use here for the internet and all of our devices that. You know, we have to have it. Our other ones are, are now old. Uh, they're not operating the way they're not maximizing their. Capacity and, and we need to change those up. And the other one is the cameras for the courtroom. Um, there's been some discussion about that. And we'll tell you that, as you all know, last month, we did not use the go to meeting. And we live streamed it still through YouTube. That didn't, that didn't turn out as, as good as we would like, but it's about what we thought it would be. So if you're going to continue live streaming your meetings, um, we, we do need to get some better cameras to use in here to do that. You know, the, the thought is, and you know, your live stream meetings, it, it is more convenient for the folks to watch the meetings. And I don't, I think the board has decided if they want to talk at the meetings, they'll still have to come. They can't call in. But if you're going to live stream them, you need to do it to where it's, you know, pretty good quality anyway. So we can't do that with what we have. And you know, some thought behind that is, we don't know what, what's going to happen in the fall or the winter time with COVID if we have to go back. You know, to not having any person, anybody here at the meetings, if you all are allowed to meet, but you can't have any people in the audience or whatever. You'll probably at that point need to live stream your meetings again. We've been doing it obviously, as you all know, using go to and it's worked well, but if you're not using a virtual meeting app. Then you have to use a camera like we used last month and it just, it just doesn't work that well. So we've got the cameras in the budget. Um, I think the networking switches, they're about twelve thousand dollars. Cameras are about fifteen. For that. Um, no other changes really in, in IT budget. I don't think there was a, there was actually a decrease in training. Um, so no, no other significant increases or decreases in that. Um, HR, no real big changes in HR. Um. I think the only thing I made a note on, travel went up slightly. That's because we got some, some folks moving around the positions there, um, that will need travel, uh, need some training on that particular position. And also they, you know, they didn't do much training either during COVID. So with some of the new requirements coming out as they're related to HR. We, those folks need to go through some training that they've not been to. So it went up just slightly. Uh, nothing else in that department went up. You'll see the software maintenance fees. That brings me to those. They went up slightly in every department. You know, your software license and renewal, software maintenance fees. All that stuff has went up and honestly, there's, there's nothing we can do about it. It's not like all of it's new purchase. That's just the cost of, of the licensing and, and the renewal fees. If we want to use it, we have to pay it. I mean, we've, we've got Microsoft Works or Word or whatever on, on all those Office Pro and. You know, we've got all kinds of softwares through the whole town that we use. I mean, I hate to tell you, but those folks pretty much have you. Once you've got their software, they'll give you their software. Or they should give it to you. They won't, but they should. So they can get you on that yearly cycle of paying the software fee. And once you get in it, you're in it. And unless you change the program or the software that you use. You pay their fees. So all those fees are associated with something that, that we really have no control over. And every time we add a person, you know, those fees go up because we're usually based on the number of users. And so they go up across the board in that particular department and then across the board anyway, whether we add a person or just, you know, normal operating business. So the next one is the police department. That's another one where, where you see the, the software maintenance fees went up. Um. You know, went up ten thousand dollars. Um, that's an increase in the service contracts there that we have. And we've added some more folks. Um, that's actually a software licensing, but the maintenance fees, that's just the fees that, that they pay. We've, they use several different products there. And again, those folks, once you're on their products, you're on it. If you want to use it, you use it. And if you don't, you might go out. It's what we found is you can go out and change providers or change software. It's cheaper the first year, but then the second year, you're right back where you were to begin with. And you probably have a software that may not be as good as what you were using. So nothing else really in the police department. Um, training stayed the same, travel stayed the same. Um. You know, a little bit of an increase, um, a couple of other line items that are just standard increases. There is some capital equipment being recommended, um, for PD this year. We are recommending, um, a new range building. I don't know how many of you have been out to the, to the firing range. We have a building out there where the, where they meet to discuss what they're doing that day, the training, get their classes. That building is, is really not sufficient for what we need now. It's pretty small. Um. It's not in good shape and you know, to fix it is just a waste of money because then it still will not accommodate our needs. So we're recommending a new building and we'll tell you, I think the chief has requested this building probably four years. Four years or five years. Um, not put it in the budget, may do with what we, what we have. But the current one that we have is making do with it anymore is probably not going to happen. So. And we utilize a range about every week, um, for training and so forth. So those folks do need a place to go when they're out there. We did not put any cars initially in the budget last year, but we were able to purchase some this year with some, some insurance money and so forth. We've got five cars in the budget this year. There, you won't see them in the, in the general fund budget for the police department. They're over in the forfeiture funds. They, the payment this year will not impact the general fund operating budget. We've got five patrol cars recommended. In the regular budget, we are recommending one SRO vehicle. And that's per our contract with the school system, um, is that we provide one of those. So we've got, basically they've got three capital project, products or purchases rather, five patrol cars, SRO car and a range building. Fire rescue, um. Flip over there to it. The first thing you'll notice in fire rescue is the, in salaries and wages temporary part time. They requested ten, uh, part time employees. Those employees, uh, would have a set number of hours that they work every month. They would be on a rotation. And so what they would do is, is they would help us out in, in the overtime, not the overtime you see there. That's pretty much set fixed overtime. But they would help us out in the overtime where we have to call employees back. Um, not recommending all ten of them, recommending five this year. If that program works well, we'll probably come back next year and recommend the other five. So we've got five of the, uh, part time employees there. Um. Increase in the professional services, it didn't, you know, it did not go up a whole lot, but that's due to some new testing that we have to give some of our folks. You'll see in the justifications, all the tests and exams they go through. Some of those are new for this year, so it went up just a little bit. Um, travel, that went up in line with, with the training. Um, this one department that, that really skipped a lot of their training last year due to COVID. You'll see an increase in the training line item as well as the travel. So we're recommending sending those folks, uh, back out to get them, um, get their training that they needed. Maintenance and repair in buildings, um, actually all three of those line items, maintenance repair buildings, maintenance repair radios, maintenance repair other equipment. That's just standard repairs. A lot of it was delayed, uh, last year because of COVID. We're still not, um, as you can see, maintenance repair buildings, we're still not doing all that this asked for. Um, but we are recommending an increase of about twenty four thousand dollars for that line item. There's still, like I said, he requested a hundred and three, we're recommending sixty five. And we'll see how that works. If, if we still need to do the other, it may be that we come back during the year, but. We, um, we didn't do all that was recommended. Now, building and equipment rental, that's a new line item is what that is, is the rental, what we project will be the yearly rental. Or not yearly rental, but the yearly payment on the Beeson's Crossroads Fire Department. As you all know, you've approved us going into that department. Uh, Beeson's will do a renovation on the station. It's a little over three million dollars. And we have signed a contract with them, an agreement with them that we'll pay them back, whatever the payment is every year. Um, so we're basing it on what we think they will get. It might be a little more, it might be a little less than that. That's our estimate. So that's what that line item is. Um, departmental supplies and materials. Again, this is some items that were eliminated. Back last year in twenty twenty one that we're recommending purchasing this year. And the same thing with the, uh, increase in uniforms and accessories. Um, really what that is, is with the five new, uh, part time employees, that'll provide them with the uniforms that they need as well. Three, uh, actually a little bit more than three, I think four maybe. Or five, um, capital purchases recommended this year, the biggest of those being a pumper truck. This will replace one that is twenty three years old. Um, we got two staff vehicles, uh, that we'll be replacing. We'll move one of those. To a reserve and move the reserve out. Um, we've got two thousand nine Tahoe that will move to backup status and we'll move out, um, an older vehicle. And then we have one of the Ford utility trucks that we're recommending replacing. Turnout gear, it's pretty standard turnout gear. We had it in there last year. We're recommending it again this year. And it will also be some turnout gear for some of the newer employees of five new, uh, part time folks. So it'll be their turnout gear. As well as some replacement gear that we need. And the, uh, air bottles, we've got some air bottles in the budget again this year, um, like we had last year. Um, for those to be replaced. I was trying to think if it, yeah, we've got ten air bottles in there this year. We'll move on to public services department. Um, really nothing in administration in public services. I don't know if they had anything really other than just the standard increases, um, anything new in their department. Move on to public services streets. Um. Really nothing in this department major that was, that's being recommended. There are some, some items you'll see down in the. Um, capital outlay repair that were requested, uh, that we're recommending not doing. Uh, one of those was contracted services downtown development. That is for the construction of a parking lot. At the lot on Cherry Street that the town purchased two years ago, maybe. Dr. Whitaker's house, an old house next to it. That is ready to, you know, that's ready to be constructed at some point in time. We did not put it in the budget. Um. Couple of reasons. Number one, we, we may be able to use some of the stimulus money for that. And we're still looking into that possibility. And also some of you might remember in the past, we've gotten, uh, some money from the state for downtown development, redevelopment. Um, spent a hundred thousand dollars one year and either seventy five thousand or ninety thousand the other year. We did have money. There was money in the state budget for twenty twenty one earmarked for the town for the same thing, but they'd never passed a budget. So, or never passed that part of the budget. The state passed them several small budgets so that they could operate. But all of the funding that was going out to local municipalities never got passed. So we didn't get any of that. So we're thinking that maybe if they actually pass a budget this year, they may, uh, my understanding is they have some money in there again for municipalities. If we're one of those and we get some, we may come back to the board and say, hey, we've got a hundred thousand dollars. You're willing to do this parking lot. The other item that is not in there, as you see, is one point five million dollars in paving. Couple of reasons. Number one being that we hope that we can use stimulus money for that. And also, as you all know, you approved, uh, some paving on the roads, the town roads that CCUC has went in and, and torn up by doing the pipe work. So we'll do right much paving on certain town roads. Um, the paving that we had in here would basically go toward paving in neighborhood, uh, not just separate roads that, that have been torn up. But it is not being recommended, uh, for this year. If we're not able to do any paving with the stimulus money. Then it will most likely be recommended for twenty two, twenty three. Cause we, you know, we try to do it every year. Obviously we don't, but we will need to do it, um, next year. The only other thing, you know, he had a couple of line items that came down. Um, salaries and wages overtime came down. His telephone and postage line item came down a little bit. Um. There is one capital item being recommended for purchase in the street division. And that is a utility bucket truck. This will replace, uh, an old service truck. But instead of just being a regular service truck, we're recommending a bucket truck. We have a need for a bucket truck quite a bit. Um, in fact, we rent one now to do all of the Christmas decorations. We need one when we have to go back in and put banners up. Um, medical parkways, you all are aware, that is a town road. And we can't reach the street lights if they go out. So it's either we go out and replace it or try to get, uh, Energy United to come out and do it. Um, so we do have a need, uh, for bucket truck. Dorn has requested the bucket truck probably for three or four years and it's been eliminated. Um, but now, you know, with it being a replacement for an old service truck, we'll go ahead and recommend a bucket truck for that. Um. And I think that's about it. Um, actually you do see in here. Salaries and wages regular, uh, they went up. That's one of the individuals moving from Stormwater back over to the street department. And that person will come back, um, into that. Solid waste, um, is the next one. No big changes in solid waste except for under landfill tipping fees. They're going up about eighty thousand dollars. There's nothing we can do about it unless you all want us to dump the trash in the middle of the. Vacant land we've got somewhere and I don't think that'll work too well. Um, we do anticipate it coming down some, the more commercial that, you know, commercial solid waste that we eliminate. It will come down, but I can tell you that does include already some of it being eliminated. Tipping fees are going up. There's no way around it and we don't have really any other good option. We do. Dorn and his folks look every year, um, at possibly taking it somewhere else. We've changed where we take it. Couple of times, but you're still limited into where you, you know, where you can take it. If you, if you take it too far away. To a place that's cheaper, you incur more wear and tear on your vehicles, more travel time, which is more downtime actually out doing the route. So you have to weigh all of that out. So there's really, you know, right now where we're taking it is, is about the best way we can do it. You know, but as you, you know, it kind of goes hand in hand. As you see all this growth and all this development, especially when it's residential. Those folks generate a lot of waste. So the more houses you see, it's just more trash going to the landfill, which is increasing tipping fees. It's just a cost to doing business. We've got no way really around it. Um. And also that leads to the one capital purchase that we're recommending, which is an automated refuse truck. Ours is, you know, we've got several that are pretty old. He had requested two. One of them was a rear loader, one of them's automated truck. We're recommending, uh, the automated truck replaced, um, this year. Central maintenance, um, nothing really in central maintenance, uh, that's out of the ordinary. You know, the, we've got our gasoline and our diesel fuel. This is where we pay for all of our gasoline, all of our diesel fuel. It goes into this department. As you can see, they each went up a little bit, not a lot. But I think this budget was figured when gas was a little bit cheaper. So if gas continues to go up, it's almost three dollars a gallon now if it continues to go up. So if gas continues to go up, it's almost $3 a gallon now if it continues to go up. And we very easily could, could go over that mark. But again, it's one of those things, if, if we want to run the equipment, run our vehicles, we've got, you know, we've got no option but to, but to do and go. Um, subcontracted vehicle repair, it came down a little bit mainly because we replaced some stuff in, in the past and got rid of some of our older rolling stock that was running up expensive repairs that we couldn't do in-house. We have to send it out. So we anticipate that coming down. And parts and accessories, you know, that's always a toss-up. Either you might be on budget. If you have a lot of repairs, you might go over budget. But, um, we actually decreased it. I decreased it. Dorn didn't. Um, from 2021, I dropped it a little bit. And if we're not right, we'll be back and tell you, hey, we missed that one. Or I'll be back and tell you, hey, I missed it. Dorn was right. But, you know, kind of the way it goes there. General services, um, the general services department is the department that is responsible for really the maintenance and upkeep of all town facilities. So when you sit back and think about that, they, they don't do the fire departments yet, but I think they're working. I think Chief Alderman and Dorn are working on something. So the general services will do a lot of the stuff at the fire departments. When you sit back and think about what those folks do, that's a lot of maintenance, a lot of upkeep. We currently only have two people doing that. Um, Dorn has told me year after year, he needs another person. He needs another person. I know he needs another person. Just never have recommended filling it. I am recommending filling that position or giving the new position to, uh, general services this year. Um, we'll fill it in January if the board approves it. Along with the position comes in a vehicle and the person got to have something to ride in. But I can tell you that, that really, I think the numbers show, we probably need four people in there and we've got two. So we're getting closer and we're right on the edge of four and five. So we're still going to be, you know, one down, if not like two down. But keep in mind, we also took on the bulk of maintenance for another building, uh, the crisis control building, Shepherd Center. You know, there've been right much going on there. Fortunately, we've not had to do a whole lot. But, you know, we've got that extra building that, that our guys do maintain and upkeep. So that's all that, uh, really that we're recommending in that department. You'll see that the salaries and wages, um, that does include the person starting in January. The reason that came down is because we eliminated the, the custodian, um, that was at public services. That person quit and Dorn went out and got bids on what it would cost to contract the custodial services out. It came in that the custodial services, when contracted out for about the same as what we can, can hire someone to do it. So we're going to try that for a year, see how it works. Um, that's why the line item contracted services went up. That's basically the, the contract, the company to do the cleaning down at public services. So there are no other changes in, in general services except for the person and the, the vehicle. That brings us really to the, the last department here when you go by order. Um, that's parts and recreation. The biggest thing in parts and recreation and the biggest thing in the entire budget is a new parts and rec center. I know we've talked about it for, Ernie's talked about it since he's been the director, but we, we've talked about it as a board. We've gotten serious about it. And I think the board has, has been serious about it and says, hey, we need to find a way to do this. Because our current, you know, our current facility is great, is, is provided a lot and given us a lot of opportunity that we didn't have when we were, were behind Station 42, the old Station 42. But as you all know, you all have, all of you have been over to the current facility. It just is not really what we need. Um, so we have got in the budget, uh, the new parts and rec center to be at Ivy Redmond Park. Um, we've got about 11.3 million dollars in the budget for it, 11.4, something like that. Along with, um, the 1.4 million dollars, I think is what it is, um, of the money from the tower. And I was looking to make sure that was correct before I got too far ahead and I was off like a million dollars or something. I think that is correct. But either way, I'll look for, while I keep talking. We have that in the budget. That is the largest item in the budget this year is a parts and rec building. As you all know, you approved us going forward with the design of that. Um, we have designed it. We've gotten, uh, the architect selected. And we have recommended, we'll recommend, I think this, is it this month? Ernie, the contract construction manager at risk next month. So we'll be ready to move forward, um, on that project when it comes up. And it looks like we've got, yeah, about 12.7 million dollars in there for that. Our hope is that we can do it for that because as you all know, construction cost went up. If it comes in and it's more than that, before we borrow the money, we'll come back. Tell you what it is, the good thing is you're looking at it, doing it on a payment of, of 20, is it 25 years from or 30? I think we've got it 25 years. So if it goes up, the payment, you know, the payment's what you'll be looking at. So it won't go up much. The other thing that, the other big item in the budget this year is also the second largest item is also in parts and rec. That is Sivatam Park. Um, we have that in the budget. The board has approved the renovation of that park. That park needs some improvement. There's no doubt about it. Um, it's the only park we have on the north side of town. So we have the renovation of that park in the budget. Some of it has already started. And then he's got some other items in the budget, um, that you'll see an increase in. Um, you know, the building and equipment rental went up a little bit, um, because of our increase, our current building, and also we now lease a facility for pickleball. You know, when coronavirus hit and in the wintertime, they can't play pickleball outside anyway. So we currently lease a facility, share one with, with another entity. Um, and that's what the increase in that was. Maintenance and repair on the ball fields, they went up a little bit. Um, we've got in there to sand cap a couple of the ball fields. We tried to do it last year. Um, just didn't get that done because of COVID. We've also, Ernie's also got some departmental supplies and materials. Um, they increased, uh, we've got in that increases due mainly to new benches in the park, picnic tables and some trash receptacles. Um, I was trying to think what else he had here that went up. Concession supplies and materials, you know, it generally runs about a thousand bucks, it's 9,000. We have to buy a new freezer and a new refrigerator down at Ivy Redmond at the concession stand. I think those may have been in there since the concession stand has been there. And they are now no longer working appropriately. So, or properly rather. So we're going to get rid of those. Um, adaptive and inclusive services, they've got in there, um, our adaptive and inclusion services, $12,000. We now have an adaptive and inclusion, uh, employee that does some programming. Uh, they weren't on board with us last year, so we didn't have anything in the budget. They've now been on board for about a full year. This just covers some of the activities that they're going to offer, um, that group of citizens. And then there's an increase in contracted services and software. We were using, um, a software company to do all the reservations, all the programming, things like that. They no longer offer that. So we had to switch, uh, companies. And so it just costs more to switch to the new one. There are two other capital projects in that budget, uh, VinTrak mower. That will allow us to mow the embankments. Currently we weed eat the embankments. Um, and that is, takes a lot of time. The mower that we're looking at doing will allow us to go on those embankments, the steep embankments at Ivy and mow those. That'd knock out a whole lot of time versus weed eating. And also we have some sun shade down at Ivy. If any of you've ever been out to a ball game at Ivy, sat up there around the baseball fields, there is no shade. Um, need some shade, a lot of hot days down there playing baseball. I think they've been in the budget about four years as well. So we're recommending, uh, doing that in the budget this year. So that wraps it up for all of the different departments, um, all of the changes that are of any significance in the line items in the budget. Again, fortunately our revenues match our expenses. Um, if they didn't, we would be in trouble or I'd be in trouble anyway. Um, you know, as, as you look through the budget, there, there are some changes, some additions. There's nothing really, really outlandish in the budget. We were fortunate, uh, to be able to recommend the, the rec center building this year. And that building, uh, all of you are aware of it, but if you're not, you know, the, that building will do as much for the citizens that go and use our services. I mean, it'll provide, give us the ability to provide a lot more services and a lot more programming than what we provide. And it will also be used tremendously and allow us to do a lot different tournaments than we host currently. We can't, in the current building, we currently, we can't host really any tournaments of, of any nature inside that are of any size. Um, this building will allow us to host volleyball, basketball, you know, wrestling, gymnastics, any of those, uh, because we'll be big enough to do that. But it's not just four tournaments, you know, I want to make everybody clear on that. It's not just four tournaments. I mean, it will provide during the week, I mean, it will provide all types of options for the citizens to come in and use the different programming. So, you know, we had three or four large capital projects years ago, really so far back as to when I started in 2008. Um, parts and rec building was on there. I remember I was on the board of Alderman when we planned it at Ivy Redmond Park back in 2005. So it's been 16 years. But, you know, there was two projects that took precedence over it. Uh, one of those being the fire station on Highway 66 and the other one being the public services building. So those two are done. And so now we're, we're fortunate that we, we think we can do the parts and rec building this year. So again, tax rate's lowering to 55.9. I will say a little bit, it is a, uh, tax revaluation this year, which means they come in, they give you a new value on your property. Question is always asked at 55.9, what's that do to someone's property tax? And I'll answer it the same way I always answered. There's no set, you know, outcome on your property tax. At 55.9, some folks will pay less, some folks will pay more, and some folks will pay about the same. You know, the way they tell you, you have to calculate revenue neutral. You take the average growth rate for, for three years. You add that to the flat revenue neutral rate, you add that growth rate to it, and that's your revenue neutral tax rate with growth calculated in. So what happens is if you had a lot of growth in one year, particularly the last year, um, right before you do the, the budget, um, you lose a lot of that growth. So, you know, it, it's hard to calculate it to where it's exactly accurate, even if you took the dead flat revenue neutral tax rate with no growth increase in it, still not going to come out exactly what everybody's paying. So we've calculated and, and we're recommending a rate that we feel is accurate and, and best for the citizens of Kernersville. As you can see in the budget message in one of the exhibits, it still keeps us, um, probably as low as anybody in the Triad area. I know the, the town tries to do that and staff tries to do that and we worked toward that. And we have accomplished that again this year, I think. Um, again, it's revaluation for several folks, not just us. But with the ones that we know of, we'll still be lowest now, as I tell the board every year. Because you all hear it, I hear it, you know, you got highest tax rate anybody in Forsyth County. Well, that's not true. Are we higher than, you know, King? Are we higher than Clemens, Lewisville, Tobacaville, Walkertown? Yep, we're higher than those folks, but they don't provide anything. They contract everything out and they don't provide the services that you all provide. Now, if you all told me next week, we want our tax rate to match that of Clemens and Lewisville, I can get you there, but you're not going to like what you got to do to get there. We are the lowest of anybody in Forsyth County that provides all of the services. The only one in Forsyth County other than us that does that is Winston-Salem. For years we were higher than Winston. Now we're lower than Winston and we'll still be lower than Winston once the revaluations over with. If what they've told me holds, holds steady, we'll still be lower than them. So be glad to answer any questions that I didn't cover. I went through it pretty quick. Trying to get you out of, done, move on by 6:30 and I believe it's 6:31. So if you got any questions, i- if you don't ask them tonight and you won't, you know, you won't answer before next week, just email me, call me, come by, whatever. I'll, I'll be glad to get you the answers that are there. But I think I covered all the stuff I went over with you individually, plus some of the individual line items in the department. So with that, I'm done and, you know, be glad to answer any questions.
We started at five, but we didn't actually start till a little later because of, um, technical issues getting online for the streaming. So we've been going for an hour and a half. So I think that we ought to take a brief recess and we can do questions and then proceed with the briefing meeting part of the agenda after the recess. So we'll stand in recess for 10 minutes. It's a briefing meeting and budget workshop for the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. We just finished hearing the town manager Curtis Swisher's presentation about the draft 2021, 22 fiscal year budget. Are there any questions you have of the town manager at this time? No questions. All right. Thank you very much, Curtis. And to the department heads and the others in the departments who were involved in preparing the budget. It takes a lot of time and, um, while the formal process starts in January to prepare for it, the efforts to have the data and the, um, thoughts of their recommendations for the, for the next fiscal year and for the future of our town take, um, a lot of time and attention even beyond January. So we really appreciate everybody's efforts. There were several items you mentioned tonight that you would see in the next year's budget. So, um, really the, um, the planning for that is continuous and, um, lengthy. And we appreciate your efforts, Mr. Swisher, and everyone else's. All right. So that brings us to item two on the agenda, which is briefing on the June 1st, 2021 regular meeting agenda. All right, Mr. Swisher, do you want to go through the budget or go through the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the, um, I think we have, you know, we have a ceremony and presentation. It was the first item on the agenda, uh, that'll be by, given by Steve Mabe, uh, regarding the Mount Ger Cemetery Association. I think he's just going to give the board a brief update on, uh, what's been taking place over at Mount Ger. Um, you've probably ridden by there and been able to see a lot of the improvements. And so I think he's going to update the board on those improvements and some future planned improvements. Um, then we'll move on to the public hearings. The only public hearing on the bu- is on fiscal year 21, 22 budget. Um, be pretty similar slides to what you saw last year, if you remember any of them for 2021 budget. I'll cover that. I'll be glad to answer any questions at that time from, that citizens may have. Got a public session item. Um, first one is consideration of an ordinance meant in traffic schedule five, chapter nine, to add Eastover Court to the list of one-way streets. Um, I think you have a memo in your packet, um, from Jeff Hatling. And they're recommending adding Eastover Drive to the one-way street. And it was, um, as you can see, it was designed to accommodate a, a one-way design on that. Also have, and I think this came up last month, and so we put it on here for this month. Item C is a request, uh, to lower the speed limit from 20, uh, 25 miles per hour to 20 miles an hour in Weldon and 25 miles an hour on Adams Street. I think it's currently 35 on Adams. Is that right? It's currently 35 on Adams and 25 maybe in Weldon. But staff recommending, uh, lowering both of those. Item D, uh, this was a request, uh, that came from a citizen to the mayor. And staff has looked at it. Um, there's Lambeth Farm Lane is when you turn off Oakhurst Street into McConnell. That is Lambeth Farm Lane. Um, we've had one of the citizens in, uh, McConnell. I don't know if they live on Lambeth Farm or not, but they live in McConnell. Um, they want to address the parking situation and the speed limit situation in McConnell. Um, staff has looked at it. Um, just roughly give you a brief idea. Lambeth Farm Lane, when, when McConnell subdivision was built- when, when McConnell subdivision was built and designed, it was designed for parking on the street. Um, because if they don't park on the street in front of those buildings, there's not enough marked spaces in the back to accommodate everybody. So if they have to move off the street and not real sure where they'll park. Um, so we'll hear what they've got to say. Staff has some recommendations as well, uh, to go along with that. And I think there will be, I'm hoping there'll be the representative from, from McConnell that emailed the mayor will be there for their part.
Keith, have you been able to get ahold of her and send her the agenda?
I have not since, not since we sent you.
Okay, the person who contacted me is actually the president of the homeowners association. So can you get in touch with her tomorrow? Okay. Do you need her email, email address or do you have it still?
I believe I still, I believe I have.
Okay, thank you.
Item E is a, uh, request by the Arts and Crafts Guild, close a portion of Harmon Lane for the Homegrown Arts Fest. I believe this is probably the third or fourth year maybe that they've done this. I was trying to remember. Um, they're going to close a part of Harmon Lane right beside of Harmon Park. Um, as you see in there, it'll be from nine AM to four PM on August the twenty-eighth. Um, so actually it's Seventh Annual Homegrown Arts Fest. At Harmon Park, they'll use the park and then also have some vendors set up on Harmon Lane as well. Staff has looked at that. No issue with that. I mean, that, that road's not used a tremendous amount on Saturdays from nine to four. So closing it will not be a problem. Have a resolution, uh, declare the badge and service weapon of Officer Eddie Schumate surplus and authorize his disposal. Item G is a budget amendment, um, number eight for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. I'll go over some of those. Um, we're just, like I said, cleaning up some items. We've got, um, three, four items with increases in expenditures. Uh, the first of those is in administration. Uh, an increase in expenditures in the net amount of four thousand, four hundred dollars to primarily cover increases in software costs and retirement expenses. Retirement expenses is for myself. My bud, my salary increase was not figured in the budget. When we budgeted, did the twenty twenty-one budget, it came in later. So with the increase in salary, the retirement expense also increased. And the software cost is some of the software that we used to prepare the agendas. Um, inspect to increase the inspections department for the net of a hundred and one thousand dollars to primarily cover the remodeling of the inspections department office areas and an increase in their group insurance. They're increasing group insurance. We have an employee in that department and we do the projections for insurance costs, um, at, before the budget's adopted. And then when you adopt it, that has those projections in it. This employee came in right after the budget was adopted and added, um, increased their coverage. So that was, you know, that's increasing the group insurance. The office, um, remodel, we're recommending or wanting to go ahead and remodel those offices in there for inspectors. Um, as you all know, inspections is now over on the side of where Jeff used to have his office and conference room. They're sharing that conference room. We have two folks in there, so we need to remodel it. You have an offsetting revenue, um, from an increase in inspections revenue that would, that will cover that remodel. Um, police department expenditures increased in the net of, um, sixty-four thousand dollars for increases in regular off-duty pay and software license fees. The biggest of those is a regular off-duty pay. You have an increase in revenue to offset that as well. Um, fire department increase in the net of sixty-nine thousand dollars to cover increase in temporary and part-time wages, um, some overtime wages. We had a lot of overtime during the COVID nineteen pandemic. We had some folks out with COVID in that department. We had to call folks in on overtime to cover it. So we had a pretty significant increase in overtime. And then we had some unexpected building maintenance, um, during the year that, that we're also covering. And then you have a decrease in the engineering department. This is what I've talked about earlier in the, going over the budget, um, for projects that we budgeted that did not, that we did not do. So overall, the, the net change is we're actually decreasing our fund balance appropriated, um, about sixty-two thousand dollars that you'll see, um, a decrease in fund balance appropriated when all those are, are accounted for. So that is the budget amendment. Um, consideration, item H is consideration of the adoption of the Onward Kernersville, Onward Kernersville final report. Um, Jeff's been working closely with those folks and he'll have that report for the board, um, on Tuesday. Contract for financial auditing services. Um, this is, um, contract for Dixon Hughes government to perform auditing services. As you all know, you approve five-year, I think it's five-year contract with them, but you have to approve their services every year. And this is to do the audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. They will be coming in and starting that audit, um, here shortly, actually. And then a consideration of a resolution accepting American Rescue Plan Act funds. As you know, the town is slated to receive seven point two million dollars. Um, part of receiving that seven point two million dollars is that we, the board has to adopt a resolution accepting those funds. So you have that resolution in your packet and it states in there that the town has an estimated seven point two two million dollars, um, to be received. You know, tells you how the funds can be used in a vague manner. And the, the board adopts that. We will have that resolution and send that to them. Have the consent agenda. Um, three, A, B, and C are all approval of minutes. One of them's minutes for the briefing, April twenty-eight. The other one's closed session, April twenty-eight, and the other one's a regular meeting, May the fourth. We have two lease agreements. There are really no changes to those lease agreements. One of them is with the Shepherd Center, um, for the senior center that occupies the basement of the old library building. The other one is the lease agreement for the Women's Club, um, who occupies the Kernersville Community House. Then having an ordinance, um, item F and G is an ordinance for Forsyth County to collect current year taxes. And the other one is to collect prior year taxes. Item H is, um, interlocal agreement for tax collection with Guilford County. We do have a small portion of our tax base, albeit big, you know, pretty good revenue in Guilford County. So that is, um, their local agreement with them to collect that. And then the last one is item I is a consideration of appointments to various boards and committees. Um, nominating committee has met. They're recommending appointments, um, appointments and reappointments, um, to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, the Sister City Commission, the Community Appearance Commission, the Board of Adjustments, the Planning Board, ABC Board, and that is it. So it was like seventy, um, seventeen appointments or reappointments for, for those. So that is all that, uh, is on the agenda for Tuesday night.
At this point in time, most of those items are, would be questions to Curtis, but do you have questions of Curtis, um, Mr. Hatling, um, Mr. Maltba on any of those items? They're all pretty routine, except for the, um, hearing from the neighborhood. And of course, they're, they'll be here at the meeting. All right. Um, Curtis, is there anything you're planning to cover at the meeting that is not on the agenda?
Nothing I'm aware of right now, no.
John, is there anything you're planning to cover at the meeting that is not on the agenda?
Two, two matters, Mayor. One is a lease proposed between the town of Kernersville and the Kernersville Museum. As you know, the Kernersville Museum owns property on East Mountain Street, South Cherry Street, and on Boathammer Street, the, uh, depot. And, uh, this would lease the properties to the, uh, the museum, uh, over a year's period of time, similar to what we do with the Women's Club. And, uh, it, it would enable the, uh, museum to hold events, uh, at which candidly beer and wine could be, uh, dispensed and would set aside for the museum the possibilities of grants that it might obtain on its own. The town may obtain grants on its own, but the museum might as well be able to do that. So that'll be proposed to you on Tuesday night. Uh, the lease is, as I say, very similar to what we have with the, uh, Women's Club. And, uh, should you have any questions before Tuesday night, please feel free to let me know. Secondly, um, I will be traveling, uh, together with, uh, Juan Avora and with Alderman Chris Thompson to Sushitoto, El Salvador, uh, on the eleventh of this coming month. And, uh, in discussions that we've had by FaceTiming and, uh, so forth with folks in Sushitoto, they would love to have a proclamation from Kernersville, something that they would sign, uh, that would indicate a sister city friendship between the town of Kernersville and the city of Sushitoto. So I'm in the process of, of drafting something along those lines, something similar to what we've used in Fort Bog and in Dashi. And, uh, I'll get that to your attention on Tuesday night. Sorry, haven't gotten it before this. It's just been impossible. Uh, but they would like very much to have that. And the Kernersville Sister City Association and the commission have authorized, uh, that previously. And, uh, but I think it'd be great if the, uh, mayor and Board of Aldermen a- as well did that. I think they, I think it would be greatly appreciated by the, uh, the folks in Sushitoto. Be glad to answer any questions you have now or later about, uh, about that. Thank you.
I wish to leave Chris over there.
Uh, actually, I, I'm sorry you brought that up, Kenny, because I have and I've taken him up on it. And I wish you hadn't given a preview to that.
It sounded like there was someone else who was traveling with you too, but I couldn't, I wasn't sure.
Juan Avora, who, uh, who, who has come, he came after the Civil War, uh, in, uh, El Salvador. And Juan has, uh, been here, uh, for many, many years. And this is his hometown is Sushitoto. And, uh, he's, he's done very well here in Kernersville. He's going to be going back with his family. We're all going together. And Chris and his daughter Macy are going with us. Uh, Chris will be coming back on the fourteenth. Uh, Juan's son, uh, Bobby and I are coming back on the twenty-second and Juan's going to stay a couple of weeks longer than that. That, I, I might point out that we are, uh, we're setting things up so that, uh, a delegation will go from Kernersville. It's planned that the delegation will go this fall down to Sushitoto. And we're hoping that there will also be, uh, an exchange of firefighters from Kernersville going down to Sushitoto and some folks from Sushitoto coming up here and working with firefighters here in Kernersville because we're trying to, uh, establish a, uh, Fire Rescue Department. While I've got the floor, I'll go ahead and mention to you that, um, it was unbelievable to me, but there is no fire, no rescue as such in the city of Sushi, Sushitoto, which is roughly the size of Kernersville, not laid out like Kernersville, of course, but roughly the size of Kernersville. The closest fire and rescue, forty-five minutes away. No fire would, no structure would make it through that. So we're, we're, we're trying to establish a Fire Rescue Department. And we've gotten some wonderful donations in already. And if any of you from the board would consider making any donation whatsoever, I think it would be wonderful for individuals to do that. Uh, you can make them to the Kernersville Sister City. And if you'll get them to me, uh, they're all being deposited into a special account. And I would say for all those out in the audience tonight, the same thing. We'd love to get those donations in as soon as possible. And we are in the process of looking for a fire, uh, a fire apparatus. And Chief here? There he is. He's back. Yeah. Uh, Chief is, is helping greatly with all of that, uh, as is the chief from Colfax, Dennis Robinson, you may know. But particularly, uh, Chief here is, is working with me and working with others, we're trying to come up with a really good truck from back in the eighties or nineties, something that the folks down there could work on and, uh, not with the new fancy electronic stuff on it, something they could work with. Uh, and we're going to be looking at a couple places that that could be housed at. So, um, yeah, really would appreciate it if anybody wants to make a donation. Certainly worthy, worthy cause. And I think it will speak well of Kernersville going forth in another country and forming a sister city relationship like this and, uh, endeavoring to set up, uh, a, a, a Fire Rescue Department for this, this town.
Thank you, John. Are there any questions? Okay, no questions on the agenda items. Nothing further from John. We are back to the briefing agenda. So matters to be presented tonight by the mayor and Board of Aldermen. Kenny, have you got anything?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Chris?
No, ma'am.
Jenny?
No ma'am.
Bruce?
No.
Joe?
No ma'am.
All right. Um, Curtis, have you got anything tonight besides, you've presented a lot of things tonight. Do you have anything else? Final thoughts?
I, I don't have a lot. I'll just be brief. I know the board has, has received a lot of questions. It's been a topic of hot discussion on Facebook and we all know that's always reliable source of, of facts. And, and that is, you know, the town's getting seven point two million dollars in, in stimulus money, American Recovery Plan Act or whatever you call it. And everybody has thoughts on how they want to spend that seven million dollars. So people are asking, what are you going to do with it? I would caution the board as I did at the beginning of the budget. As I said, the budget for the upcoming year has none of those funds in it. I want to caution the board and let the board know that, that right now, we're not staff anyway. We're not going to come out with any recommendations right yet. We are busy looking at the act and what you can and can't spend, mainly what you can spend the money on. And keep in mind, it's a hundred and thirty-four pages and a lot of it's a hundred and thirty-four pages of federal gibberish, but you have to make out what that gibberish means. At first glance, I can tell you, I don't know that we could spend over about a million dollars of the seven point two million that we're getting. But as you dig into it, you might can, can spend some more money. I know Greensboro, you know, they jumped out there pretty early before anybody and, and Winston wasn't far behind them. Greensboro went out and put it out to the citizens and said, tell us how you want to spend the money. Well, in my opinion, that was pretty dangerous to do because the citizens are never going to come up with a way they want you to spend it. This allowed how you can spend it. I read in the paper yesterday, Greensboro at the meeting, their finance director and assistant city manager said, well, we don't know how we can spend the money now that they've told everybody to tell them how they want to spend it. They've now said they don't know how they can spend it. And as I've told some of you all individually, we're not going to know for probably a month or two how we can spend that money. As Greensboro said the other night, they think there's even new regulations coming out in a couple of three weeks that will give you a little more flexibility on how you can spend it or some more clarification. So I'm just cautioning the board, don't get ahead of yourself and go out and say, well, we'll spend it to do this, do that, do this and do that, because this, that, and this, and that may not be allowed. Um, it, it is pretty specific in some places, um, but in some places it makes absolutely no sense when you read it. Um, for instance, they, I emailed John and Ed, um, the other day. Governor Cooper came out and said that he's, he's going to give ten million dollars to North Wilkes
to North Wilspur Speedway for tourism, $10 million to Rockingham Motor Speedway for tourism and $10, $10 million to Charlotte Motor Speedway. I don't know how many of y'all racing fans, but I know a little bit about it. North Wilspur Speedway closed in 1996. So that's 25 years ago. If he can give them $10 million for tourism, we ought to be able to use it however we want to. But that ain't going to happen. They're going to build some kind of moonshine heritage trail. Unless we can find a way to put a steel in Kernersville and start it or end it here. I don't know what, I don't know how we want to do that. But so it looks like to me tourism might be kind of wide open. But when you read the actual bill itself, as it relates to tourism, it's not wide open enough that I can see how the governor can justify giving North Wilspur Speedway $10 million. But I'm not his advisor, so I don't know. I would like to talk to his advisor and find out how they did it. But we will have some information to the board with some options of, of what we think is allowed spending, how you can spend that. And I've sent it out to some of the department heads, sent it out to all of them and said, hey, y'all read through this. If you find a way to do it, what we can do, you know, things like that, let us know. But I will tell you, I, I did learn something today. I learned that there is something called counterfactual. Now, think about that, counterfactual. That means non-factual. So you calculate your counterfactual revenues and compare that to your actual revenues and that's your revenue loss. Now, how you figure out what counterfactual revenues are, I don't really know. But to me, it sounds like you just make up some revenues and you take what you actually got and the difference is lost. So keep in mind, I don't, you know, if we spend this stuff wrong and they come in and audit us, somebody's going to jail and I would much rather it be Eddie and John than me. So, you know, if they say I can go with these counterfactual revenues that I've created, I'll go with it. But, you know, until then, I don't know. So we're, we're kind of waiting on some more guidance that seems to be legitimate. And then I'll come back with some legitimate options for you to choose from. And the way I can read it right now, it's probably not going to be anything anybody in the public would tell you to spend it on. So that's where we are. And I'll cover that next week as well briefly at the public hearing, in case we have some more folks watching that, that are wondering how we can spend that $7 million. But it is not a free-for-all with $7 million, go out and spend it how you want to. So, you know, that's where we're at on that. I know a lot of you have been asked and a lot of you have asked me and I just kind of wanted to update you on it. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf, do you have anything else for tonight?
No, ma'am.
All right. Is there any further business before this board? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Alderman Thompson, second by Alderman Boyer. All those in favor? It's unanimous. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.